I went to allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on August 2nd, 2021, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $876,977.93. F, approval of BAZOAR report of claims in the amount of $54,955.58. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, resolution number 6752, entering into a farm lease with Justin M. Wiegand for farming purposes. And I, resolution number 6758, regulating parking along 11th Street from the intersections of Ella Street to Dorsey Street. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Kleba?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and are ratified as presented.
Second. By Kleba, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a public hearing on the substantial change to the redevelopment contract with Northgate Campus One LLC due to the increased size of the redevelopment area being planted as Lot Two, Northgate Crossing, third addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska. Tobias?
So, the Northgate Crossing LLC TIF agreement, this is up where Rare Earth is located, just north of the hospital here in town. If you recall, this originally when a TIF was started, there were two lots in this. There was where Rare Earth is located, and then there's Elmond Avenue, and then on the east side of Elmond Avenue was another lot that was vacant at the time. That lot has since, the lot on the east side of Elmond Avenue has since been vacated and replatted for a potential sale. When it was replatted, it was, the lot grew further to the south, closer to the hospital, so it became a bigger lot. Since you're adding area into a redevelopment area, redevelopment agreement, we figure that probably qualifies as a substantial change to the TIF agreement itself. If you have substantial change, you're required to have a public hearing before city council, and then ultimately go back to CRA for final approval. So, the only change in the redevelopment agreement itself is including additional land on the east side of Elmond Avenue, which was not figured into any of the TIF calculations when the original redevelopment was put together as far as payback for the initial improvements that were made. This lot was not considered part of it because it was empty at the time, and has been empty since then. So, it is not impacting any of your redevelopment's pay schedule.
Mr. Kerr?
Does that add to the percentage of the TIF?
No, because the percentage that you're thinking about has to do with how much has been determined to be blight and substandard.
Yeah.
And so, that number did not change. This area is already blight and substandard.
Ready.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. Kleba?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:04 PM.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Frayland, that the public hearing be closed at 7:04 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Next is a public hearing on the acquisition of real property from Bernita R. Morgan, described as follows. All of Lot One and Lot Two, grants subdivision, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 701 South Fourth Street, partial number 0103-85000.
So, that's not the right map up there. So, this parcel is, again, 701 South Fourth Street. It had a fire in it in December of 2019. As a result of that structured fire, this property became essentially a total loss at that point. Later on, the city was condemned the property and ultimately ended up tearing it down. We have a demolition cost that's outstanding. We've talked to Ms. Morgan as a way to recoup our costs, and we've come to an agreement where she will pay the city $5,000, and she will deed us the property at 704 South Fourth Street. She will pay $2,500 immediately upon closing, and she'll pay the remaining $2,500 over the course of a year in monthly payments.
Questions, gentlemen, from the audience? All right, Mr. Kleba?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:05 PM.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:05 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Next is a public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant for a housing rehabilitation program for owner-occupied homes within the city of Beatrice. And with us, with the SEND group is Tom Bliss. Tom, you want to come up and tell the city council the plan and what we're going to do moving forward?
Yeah, once again, good evening. My name is Tom Bliss. I am the executive director for Southeast Nebraska Development District. We are one of eight development districts in the state of Nebraska, and we serve your region. So, thanks for including me on the agenda tonight. The city is requesting $547,000 for a housing rehab program for owner-occupied housing. A lot of times, we call this OOR, owner-occupied rehab, so if I do slip into that, that's what it means. This would be for owner-occupied homes within the city of Beatrice. 100% of this project is paid for with CDBG funds. It benefits low to moderate income families. This is, low to moderate income is basically your county's median household income, then 80% of that. Does that make sense? So, if your county's median household income was $50,000, 80% would be $40,000, and anyone that makes less than $40,000 would be eligible for this program. Of those, of the 547,000, $450,000 would be available for housing rehab construction, $50,000 would be available for housing program management costs, and $27,000 would be available for lead, paint, hazard testing, and clearance. And then $20,000 would be available for project administration costs. No local match is budgeted for this project, and there are no plans to displace people or families as a result of this project. The city will be adopting a plan for minimizing displacement and for assisting any persons actually displaced. So, for example, if you choose to help a family and the house is beyond repair, you might choose to relocate that family. Does that happen? Not very often, but it can happen. But, once again, you will have a plan in place to help a family move if they, if that does happen. Are there any questions on this?
The only thing I would note is, you talked about the AMI. 80% of the AMI for Gage County for a family of one is $40,150. For a family of four, it's $57,350. It's a sliding scale based upon the number of people in your household, and I think the maximum amount anybody can get is $24,999.
Correct, Tobias. So, the maximum amount anyone can get is $24,999 for housing rehab. You can attack, you can tack a little bit extra onto that for lead abatement. So, for example, if you were doing some sort of rehab program and you ran into lead, you could spend a little bit more to abate that lead. So, you can go over that just slightly, but for the most part, $24,99 or $25,000 is the maximum. This application is due September 15th. One of the key pieces to making your city's application more competitive is to get pre-applications. So, one of the ways in which the Nebraska Department of Economic Development gauges your community's interest is the number of pre-applications that are submitted with the application. So, the idea, our rule of thumb, is usually you get one and a half pre-applications per application that you hope to submit. So, with this, $450,000 divided by 25,000 is 25 homes? 18 homes? Thank you. I didn't do very well in math. So, with that 18 homes, what you try to do is get one and a half times that in pre-apps, so 24, or maybe even 30. But, once again, this is a competitive process, so you're not guaranteed to get it. So, you try to maximize that competitive factor by showing that Beatrice really needs this program. Any questions?
Okay, we have, how many applications?
Well, no, my question, he answered.
Just a moment, just a moment.
Oh, sorry.
We've got how many applications?
If I'm estimating the number of pre-applications that we have in this file between 40 and 50 at this point, pre-applications are available on our website. Anybody can pick them up. They're simply one sheet of paper, and it's not anything that's binding, so if you do fill it out and submit it and you change your mind at a later date, no problems.
Correct.
So, no, my question for him, what got answered, because I wondered what the parameters were of it and how many households they intended to do. So, he answered that, but I guess, I do have a question. Is this tethered to anything else that we're doing? I mean, we, we've had grants in the past for weatherization, for upgrading, you know, certain things, I mean, for HVACs and those. I mean, this is, is this tethered to any, I mean, or is this designed, or are you focusing on anything specific, or is it just general rehab? I mean, could you reseed your yard? I mean, what, what's the parameters of it?
So, I'll walk you through the process. So, let's say that, and typically, a community has to identify a housing committee. The housing committee really determines which homes are funded and which homes are not funded. So, SEND determines, or someone submits an application, we will kind of review it for eligibility to make sure that the owner is actually eligible for this program. Once that occurs, we submit a list of eligible projects to the housing committee. A lot of communities use the city council as that. Others will have a subcommittee. They will determine which projects are, they want to fund. From there, we will send in someone, a housing program specialist with SEND, and they do a walkthrough. They'll work with the homeowner to determine, let's say the homeowner wants a new roof, new siding, new HVAC, new windows, so energy efficiency types of things. We kind of create a checklist, and then we go through a subcontract to determine how much each of those individual items will cost. And then we'll spend all of that $24,999. Sometimes, we can, we can save a little bit of money here, or save a little bit of money there, and as a result, we can do five activities instead of four activities. Sometimes, we can only do three. What are the things that we try to steer clear from? Our foundations, simply because you can work on a foundation, you can put $25,000 into that, and it won't have any real effect on the home. The goal of the program is to maintain your housing inventory. So, I'm sure Trevor here can explain to you that housing inventory is important, especially for workforce, and this is just one of those mechanisms in which you can maintain that.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Do, can the homeowner do the work himself so the money goes further, or do you have to use a licensed contractor?
We prefer to use the licensed contractor simply because it comes with a warranty, and a lot of times, you know, older homes, things shift, things move, and that, that warranty is really helpful.
Any other questions?
The only thing I would note is, online, our information talks about eligible items include structural, mechanical, electrical, winterization, and plumbing improvements. So...
Anyone from the public? Stan? Yes, Rich?
The federal government has something, when they got contracted, I think it's called the bacon?
Davis Bacon?
Bacon?
Davis Bacon.
And that is, yeah, Davis Bacon, and that thing is for contractors. Is yours a little simpler than that Davis Bacon?
It's a lot simpler, yeah, yeah.
Because we'd like to, you know, if they get in, we'd like to keep that local with our contractors.
Sure, and, and that is one of the things, councilman, that, that we really work towards. We try to identify local subcontractors. So, when you're talking 400 and some thousand dollars of, of these grants going through your community, we try to keep them as local as possible. But, it is a competitive bid process, so we, you know, low bid typically wins.
Okay. Any other questions of Tom? All right, Tom, thank you very much for coming. Well, wait a minute. Yeah, I asked for a question from the public. Do you have a question?
I have an answer.
Okay. Why don't you come on up, please? Tom, thank you very much for coming.
By the way, Ms., Mr. Kerr died about 30, 30 some years ago. How's Rich?
Ashley Mason, 1300 Lincoln Street. When I was on the website, he mentioned using local contractors. The localist contractor I could find was in Lincoln. Are we letting our local contractors know that this program's going to be available, that they can sign up for, that they can go through that process?
We will. At this point, we haven't had any application in yet. That's why we don't have any information as far as local contractors that'll participate in the program. But, once, if we're approved of the application, we'll contact local contractors and make sure they get an opportunity to bid on this and have their, have their chance as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kleba?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:16 PM.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Billsbach, that the hearing be closed at 7:16 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Next is a public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant to aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions within the area of downtown designated by the city and identified in the city's 2016 downtown revitalization project.
Mr. Bliss, come on back up.
So, this is a very similar program. The city is being aggressive this year in applying for a community development block grant program. That's good. This is a particular program geared for downtown revitalization, and I think you may have had one of these in the past. This would just be a phase two of that, or a phase three. This is, the city of Beatrice is requesting $445,000 in community development block grants to aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions within the area of downtown designated by the city of Beatrice and identified in your downtown revitalization project. This area remains blighted and some standard is identified by resolution 6667 passed on January 18th, 2021. Funds will be used to eliminate slum and blight conditions on an area wide through commercial rehab of privately owned properties, including activities such as facade improvements and repairs necessary for correction of code violation, as well as any public infrastructure improvements needed for ADA compliance. The city is requesting $445,000 of community development block grant. Funds of this, $35,000 will be used for program administration, and $10,000 will be used for construction management. At least $100,000 in matching funds will be provided by local business owners. And, similar to the owner-occupied rehab, no persons will be displaced as a result of these activities.
And we have several applications, or interest, anyway.
We have, as well, we have the pre-applications for this process as well, which, again, are available on our website. If anybody's interested, it's one sheet of paper, so we encourage anybody to fill those out. I believe we probably have about 20 of those currently in the office.
Rich? Is that the one where they have, they have put some money into, to?
Yes, that's what I...
A certain percentage of whatever it was?
Yeah, we require a match of usually about 25%. Can change based upon what, but a minimum of usually about 25%, and that would be the property owner's responsibility to put in for this project.
And that was quite a successful phase we did the last time. We used...
Yeah, I mean, last time, you did it about four years ago now, when it started, and it took a couple of years to get everything completed, but yes, it was quite successful in the downtown area.
Anybody else? Michael? Thanks again, Tom.
Michael, so then, Main Street Beatrice, just wanting to, part of this public hearing, testify in support of this application. I think you guys all are certainly aware of that, but just wanting to thank you guys for definitely being aggressive and applying for a CDBG grant. As Rich, as you were saying, you know, we had this opportunity that we applied for last in 2016, and had that program in 2017, finishing up in 2018, resulted in just short of 20 projects. You know, while it gave out about $350,000 worth of grants, the actual investment spent was close to $5 million that year on downtown improvements. So, definitely see way more than a 25% match typically, which is exciting to see, and so, definitely thankful for that. Something that I know we did not necessarily hear, but we've been talking about quite a bit with the city, to include in it is, besides the code compliance, is also funding for second floor usage, and so, I'm assuming that that's still included in there, but that's definitely one of the priorities this year, is going a little bit beyond just facades, trying to really take on some of the interior structural elements, make these buildings more competitive, more cash flowing, and be able to also serve a role in addressing some of those housing needs for Beatrice. So, thank you again for making this application, and definitely supported by Main Street Beatrice.
Any questions of Michael? Or any more questions of Tom? Okay, anyone from the public? All right, Mr. Kleba?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 PM.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Frayland, that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Next on the agenda is a resolution, resolution number 6746, executing any and all contracts, documents, exhibits, memoranda, and all other documents necessary to effectuate the prudent RX copaid optimization program as part of the city's self-funded employee health plan.
I move that resolution number 6746 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number 6746 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This item came before you last week on the consent agenda, and, Mr. Kleba, I'd ask that we delay it until tonight. If you recall, this is something which would be a change to our current health insurance plan, having to deal with those individuals who take specialty medicines. They continue to be in the same place that they were before the employee is. The city is able to save some dollars as a result of this program, and, Mr. Kleba, I don't know if you've got some of your questions answered?
A few of them, yes, but in, in the end, to save the city some money, and especially save employees some money, that's the, that's the right thing.
Questions, gentlemen, from the audience? Kerr?
Rich will say it because he's in the pharmacy business, but does this affect our two, our pharmacies here in town much?
The specialty pharmacy business was going outside of town all the time.
Was it?
Yeah, and, and most of that specialty pharmacy stuff is done with the big, big specialty pharmacy pharmacies, so...
So, it really doesn't affect our, our pharmacy's bottom line?
Nope.
Because we want to keep it in town if we can.
Any other questions in the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Resolution 6746 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6753, executing the railroad track maintenance agreement between the city and Akuma Corporation for the sharing of costs for maintaining the railroad trackage owned by the city.
I move that resolution number 6753 be passed and adopted.
Second. By Kleba, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution 6753 be passed and adopted.
So, into the industrial park, there is a rail spur. Comes off along Railroad Road, or Hoyt Street, Hoyt Street, or Blue Ridge Road, depending on what you prefer to call that particular street. But, off of the, the main line that's there by BNSF, there's a spur that goes into the industrial park. That was installed somewhere in the mid-'90s. That line is, belongs to the city of Beatrice. The only place that it uses it though is Akuma at this point, and Akuma recently was notified by BNSF that the rail is in need of some repairs. And so, we sat back, we had an individual come, we not got some quotes, we had Burns and Matt come up and do an inspection of the track itself. They put together a proposal of what needs to be done for the track, and then what we did is, we reached out to Akuma and were able to sit down with them and come up with an agreement where we agreed to split the cost for the improvements at the track 50/50. Again, it is your track, and you're responsible for it, but Akuma's the one who uses it. The estimate we have at this point is about $50,000 to make the improvements to the track itself. There's 175 ties that need to be replaced, and so, assuming approval tonight, we'll work with the contractor, have them come in and start making repairs. They believe the repairs will take them about a week in total to do, so we'll work with Akuma on their schedule to make sure it works around deliveries for them the best we can. But, that's where you're at.
Questions? Gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Resolution 6753 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6754, consenting to and approving the first amendment to redevelopment contract with Northgate Campus One LLC.
I move that resolution number 6754 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6754 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion regarding the redevelopment area? Anyone, gentlemen, from the audience? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Resolution number 6754 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6755, executing the application and the other documents necessary for the Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant for an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program within the city.
I move that resolution number 6755 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6755 be passed and adopted. Heard the discussion?
I think the application's due in about a month, I think September 15th, and so, we'll work with SEND over the next month, getting everything put together for this grant, and get all the pre-applications submitted with the grant as well, so...
Okay, any other questions? Again, from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Resolution 6755 has been passed and adopted. Next is item E, resolution 6756, executing the application and other documents necessary for the Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant to aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions within the area of downtown designated by the city.
I move that resolution number 6756 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by McLean, that resolution 6756 be passed and adopted. Any other discussion, gentlemen? While Tom's here?
What's the deadline on that?
I think it's September 15th as well.
Okay.
Good. All right, anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Resolution 6756 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending section 2-83 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the publications of city ordinances.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-34. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Frayland, that the ordinance be given number 21-34. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Ordinance number 21-34 by number the first time, ordinance number 21-34 by number the second time, and ordinance number 21-34 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 21-34 be passed and approved.
Second. Moved by Kleba, seconded by Frayland, that ordinance number 21-34 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
State statutes since, I don't know, beginning of time, required that when you passed an ordinance, you had to publish it by pamphlet form in the newspaper. And so, you would look in the paper, and you'd see all this little tiny print that was like, as long as the page would go, putting forth our ordinances there. At this last legislative session, they changed that, and they now allow you to publish it by electronic form, or to publish it on your website, the way they classify as being published by electronic form. Your city code indicated that you had to publish it by pamphlet form, and so, we're looking to amend that to allow you to publish it by any form that's allowed by state statute, so we can start publishing electronically. We have been doing both for the last couple of years, and so, we'll look to continue to do the electronic format.
And there's a couple of exceptions to that.
There are some exceptions in there, obviously some annexations, if you buy some real estate. Some of those that have their own notice requirements, those will still have to be published in the paper, obviously.
Questions? From the audience? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Ordinance number 21-34 has been passed and adopted. Ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-four has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance vacating all of the lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, Block twenty-six, West Park Addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-one dash three-five. The title thereof be approved and rules be suspended, and said said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-one dash thirty-five. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-four, thirty-five by number the first time, ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-five by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-five by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-five be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-five be passed and approved. Tobias?
So, this is a parcel of property at two fourteen Abbott Street. Our map is upside down, so please forgive us. Two fourteen, two sixteen Abbott Street, which is on the west side of the community. There used to be a house located, I think at two fourteen Abbott Street. It was owned by a couple of people who had deceased. It had become dilapidated, and ten years ago, the city was able to tear that particular property down. Then there were some back taxes, it became a zombie property for a number of years. Finally, we were able to get it into hands of some individuals who looked to redevelop that particular property. And so, you see two steps again tonight. The first one here is vacating those two lots, and then what you'll see next is a replat of those two parcels into the Wallman Addition.
Is that in the fringe?
No, it's far enough away that it's, yeah.
Okay.
Second Street, right? Flight plane?
It's, you know, it's fine, it's only a block and a half off the highway, so it's okay.
Any other questions? And your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-five has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance approving the plat of Wallman Addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-one dash thirty-six. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Frayland, that the ordinance be given number twenty-one dash thirty-six. The title thereof approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six by number the first time, ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Frayland, that ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six be passed and approved. Tobias?
Yeah, so this is just the second part of the transaction, and that's replating it as the Wallman Addition.
Questions? Gentlemen? The audience? Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-one dash thirty-six has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution, Resolution sixty-seven fifty-seven, executing the contract for donation of real estate and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Bernita R. Morgan.
I move that Resolution number sixty-seven fifty-seven be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution sixty-seven fifty-seven be passed and adopted. Any other questions, gentlemen? The audience? And your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Resolution sixty-seven fifty-seven has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anything from the, for the public forum, gentlemen? Audience? All right, seeing none, we'll go into discussions and reports. Tobias, you're on.
Sure, so, once again, you have the administrative report there, answer any questions. You have a couple of highlights. If you haven't driven by, the river access is under construction, so as moving forward, one of the common questions they get are, what are those pipes that are there? What are they for? While we have a contractor there, we're doing some work to the center, or the storm sewer that's there as well. That storm sewer drain comes off the Highway one thirty-six, comes out and then drains into the river. With the work that's being done for part of the river access, that pipe needs to be extended, and so, we have the same contractor doing that work there. When they are done, the street department will come back to that site, and they will install what's called a check valve into there. Essentially, it's also called a duck bill, but what it does is it allows water to go out the tube, but hopefully not water to come back up the tube. What we see when we have flooding on Highway one thirty-six, it usually comes out of the storm drain first, and it's because water backs up the pipe and then comes out. So, we're hoping by putting this check valve in there, we can delay, I won't say prevent, but delay the water coming out on the Highway one thirty-six, which hopefully will prevent it from flooding and allow us to keep that road open more often than we've been able to in the history with other floods. So, that's what we're doing there, so if you see the pipe, that's what's happening at that point.
Do you think Mr. Laumann's going to be finished with his work?
I believe we're looking at sometime early October. That's kind of what he's shooting for at this point, but, so, we'll see. Hopefully, the weather stays dry for him, he can keep working there. Chief Standing Bear, trail there, we're working on the trailhead there at Perkins Street and the highway. We've got the bathroom, it's ordered, it's essentially a mirror of the bathroom that's at Astro Park, and so, it's going to be the same one there. I think the only difference is this one will be heated, and so, will enable us to keep it open, hopefully, year-round for those who use the trail. There will be locks on it, and so, it will lock automatically, so we'll have to make sure we have proper signage so people know what happens there. But that has been ordered, it's on, supposed to be delivered here, hopefully, within the next month, six weeks or so. So, the utility guys have to, their work cut out for them to get their water lines, sewer lines, all that stuff in place before it gets here. Went very smoothly at Astro Park, we expect the same thing here. They give us very precise specifications. You build that way, they just come and set the bathroom right on top, and then you bring your guys back in to finish out the plumbing work.
Where's that going to be located from, the shelter?
Essentially, right next to the shelter to the west. And then, west of that will be the parking lot itself, which will be, I believe, ten, twelve stalls, somewhere right in there is what you're looking at.
I think Rich has a question.
We talked about here a while back about moving the recycling bins from down there by the administration building, or the old.
The old Humane Society.
Where are we on that?
You do not follow us on Facebook.
I don't have Facebook. If I want to talk to somebody, I get the phone or I go talk to them face-to-face.
Okay, we're going to get you an answer here.
So, the street department's been busy down there where the old Humane Society was at, and for those who aren't familiar with town, the, you have the auditorium, and just to the west of the auditorium there and their parking lot, we took down the old metal structure a number of years ago. But that location there, the street department's been in doing some work to smooth out the concrete. The fence contractor's been in even today, working on putting the fence up around that location. And then, the next thing is, we will move the recycling center locations from both the one by the skate park and the one by Dempsters down to that one location and have them all there. So, it's underway, we're just waiting for contractor to finish up, and then we'll be able to get everything moved down there.
We'll put that on Facebook with you, because I get a lot of questions about that.
It is on Facebook.
Tobias, will that be after the fire department moves?
Good question. Contractors are a little earlier than we thought they would be. Usually, the fire department parks on the other side, so we'll kind of look and see. Biggest question would be whether or not Jason is going to get the trucks in and out of there without, with other city vehicles being parked down there. But that would be the only delay, but we'll check to see for sure. We'll probably have a ribbon cutting, we'll invite Rich down, see.
You've got the ribbon. That's fine. Any update on the fire station that was Facebook?
So, an update on the fire station, things are going along. If you've been inside the building, which I know most people haven't been, because it's not open to the public yet, cabinets are going in, countertops are going in, first coat of paint's on the walls, so things are moving there. Quite honestly, the biggest snag we've run into is the roof itself. We had a long time getting the metal roof up here, and then when they got it up here and they started to install it, they realized it was not the spec, and so, that's why they have stopped installing the roof at this point. We've been examining options for it, everything from taking a deduct and just pulling up what they have, to going to a different vendor, to having the current vendor fix the mistake that they've made. And so, we've chosen the latter, and so, they are going to shut down their plant. They're going to ship up the machine that they need to put, they're called pencil, or pencil wedges? Pental ridges into the metal sheeting, and so, when they bring that machine up here, they'll do all that on-site, and then they'll finish out installing it. What it basically does is help the metal roof not bend as much and warp as much in the heat over time. It still will, but this will hopefully help eliminate that at least somewhat. So, that's what they're waiting for, is for that contractor to come up sites, do that work. So, Hampton is pushing very hard, because Hampton knows they can't finish the project until that subcontractor does their work, so, but that's, that's the biggest hang-up at this point. Other than that, if you look around there, you're seeing concrete get poured. I mean, so, things are moving, but that's the, that's the holdup there now. The other thing is that Mastic sealers are in town today, so it's another type of armor coating. Everybody's familiar with armor coating, right? We spray the oil down, we put the rock down, and then we drive over for a while, and we finally sweep up the rock that's armor coating. Another mechanism to seal roads is a Mastic sealer. Those guys rolled in today, they may have started yet tonight already, but it's another process we're trying out to see how that works. Biggest difference is it goes down black, and it takes about an hour or so to dry. You can't drive on the road during that time. Well, you can, but it's going to get all over your car, so when the roads are closed, don't drive on it for those reasons. And then, they'll continue to kind of work through town. And then, we also have the asphalt rejuvenator, we've been trying that one our last couple of years as well, just a different process. We're just trying some different things out and see what we like, what works best for us over the course of time.
Questions of Tobias?
On Second Street there, they're going to just leave that buckled with asphalt? Or are they going to re-concrete that?
Once again, our Facebook page, we've answered this question.
I don't get on Facebook, I don't have it.
You're not going to change it?
No, I can't even do this computer very well.
Yes, we had a street down there that buckled. They have come through, and initially, what they do is kind of cut it out, put the asphalt down because it allows it to kind of breathe a little bit. There's another one on Scott Street, about twenty-fourth, some, I think there's a couple more in town that they've had here. As the weather kind of cools, they'll come back in, they'll saw cut those out, pour the concrete back, and make it a permanent fix. But the asphalt is kind of a temporary. In case the road continues to kind of move, it's easier to handle than concrete.
You know, you said that's not open to the public, Doug. Doug and I and Ted probably only went, you know, if we had those badges we should have had fifteen years ago, never mind.
I don't need badges.
Remember those? We used to have fights over those.
With that, any other questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, with that, our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, September seventh, seven o'clock in these chambers, and there's going to be a special meeting on August thirtieth regarding the proposed fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget hearing. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the meeting be adjourned at seven forty-three.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that the meeting be adjourned at seven forty-three P.M. Your vote, please, and that's approved eight zero.